Agents to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. This is Monday, March 4th. If you have any questions or business with this council, come up to this microphone over here on your right, give us your name and address, and tell us what's on your mind. Call the roll, please.
Cedar?
Here.
Ellery? Kinzetter?
Here.
Koopa?
Here.
Laporte?
Here.
McCartney?
Here.
Watt?
Here.
I'll make a motion to excuse Councilmember Ellery for...
Questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed?
Thank you.
All right, we'll go to four consented Senate City Council minutes of February 18th, 2019, special and regular meetings. Recommendation approved. There should be one correction on there. The attendance, absence says none, but I believe Member Koopa was absent that day.
I'd be correct.
I'll make a motion to approve those minutes with that correction.
So, Lord.
Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed? All right, number five is a public hearing for a commercial rehabilitation. Just to come to open a public hearing, ask Mr. Casey to start. Give us a little background information. Come up here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening. Mr. Kowalski was hoping to be here today to address this particular issue, but as you probably heard, his airplane never got off the ground in California, so he asked me if I could stand in for him today, so I'm happy to do that. So, one thing I want to make clear first off is that tonight, under the public hearing, what council is considering is creating a district under Public Act 210, which is the Commercial Rehabilitation Act. So, tonight is not a decision about a tax abatement application, per se. It is instead about whether you should create a district. The difference is that before a tax abatement application under PA 210 can be submitted to the city, there first must be a district in place. The district creates the eligibility or the area in which those abatements can occur. And so, that's what you'd be doing tonight, is establishing a district. If in the future, at any time, you choose that you no longer want the district there, it can be removed. So, this is not anything other than just creating an area of eligibility for tax abatements to occur under PA 210. Now, a little bit about the act. What is the purpose of a Commercial Rehabilitation Act? Basically, it's a program that was created in Michigan many years ago. There's a companion to it called the Obsolete Property Rehabilitation Act, or OPA, which has been used very effectively in what are called core communities in Michigan. There's about 30 core communities. In our county, the only one that we have is in Port Huron. So, any other community in the county that has an older building like this that requires some form of rehabilitation, this is the act that you would use to do that, particularly if it has a residential component, which this project will. So, this is the appropriate act for that type of tax abatement application. What it essentially will do for companies that apply is it will grant them up to a one-year exemption on the improvements that they make, or the value of the improvements they make to a property. So, it establishes a baseline value in the year in which it's created, and then those taxes for that baseline value will continue to be paid to all the taxing jurisdictions for the length of time that you approve. But, any increase in value basically gets capped during that period of time. It becomes essentially tax exempt. So, what it is, is it's intended to be an incentive to encourage people to invest in these older properties and to bring them back to life. Particularly, what that act contemplates is buildings that are functionally obsolete, and there's a lot of definitions of functional obsolescence. It could include a bad roof or sagging roof condition. It could involve mechanicals in a building that are old and need to be replaced. It could be old wiring or lack of IT-type infrastructure in buildings to make them viable. It could be weak or damaged foundations that need to be bolstered or replaced. Those kinds of things in a building. I think we'd all agree that with a historic building like we have at the junior high, for example, that that's probably a functionally obsolete building. But, that's a determination that the city will have to make at the appropriate time when a tax abatement application is submitted. So, hopefully, that gives you some background on the purpose of the act and what your action tonight, if you choose to act on it, would be. It would be to create that district, which would then make properties in that district eligible for tax abatement applications.
Currently, Mr. Casey, that building has no base value property tax-wise.
Correct. It's considered a tax-exempt property currently.
So, would it be the city assessor that would determine that value, the base value?
Yes. If a tax abatement application is submitted, the first step is that the assessor has to assign a value to that building. Now that it's going back on the tax rolls, they will determine what the actual value is, and then if an application comes in for an abatement, again, any investment that occurs in that property that goes beyond that base value would potentially be tax exempt.
And that tax exemption portion would be determined by this body, or is that set by the law?
Under the law, it becomes tax-exempt from that baseline value up. So, if they invest, let's say, $2 million, and it raises the building value by $1 million, that increased $1 million value is what would be tax exempt.
For how long?
As many years as you approve, up to 10 years.
Up to 10 years, okay.
Yep.
And the property we're going to be considering is just the property for middle school?
I'm sorry?
The property we'll be considering for this district will be just the property that the middle school sits on?
That's correct. The request was for a particular property address, so it's essentially one building.
Okay.
What's the process? Is the base value set now, and then they go ahead and do the improvements, and then that adds to the total value, or is it at what point is that value assessed?
Well, actually, the minute that the property transacts, which it already has, as I understand it, the city can at any point now assign it a value. Most likely, it would do it by December 31st. At the end of the year, it would be assigned a value, and that would be on the tax rolls and eligible, you know, for the summer tax bill next year. So, that's going to happen regardless of whether there's a tax abatement application pending or not.
Anybody else on council have any questions for Dan? All right, thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
We might call you back up, and we'll see. You want to add anything to that, Jeff?
No, I just, I don't. I talked to Jeff Kowalski. I talked to him twice today while he was on the plane.
Oh, can you get up there?
I was just going to say, I just want to echo what Dan had said. Mr. Kowalski had all intentions of being in town. He called me twice from the plane today. He sat there for about four hours before they finally canceled his flight. So, I know we're talking about rescheduling. We had the public, you know, meeting to talk about his plans. I know, Mr. Booth, I reached out to Mike, and I think we're trying to get something together for the 21st, if possible. He was going to be back in town at that time, Thursday at 7:00 o'clock. So, if you're available, we're just trying to catch him into his schedule. So, thank you.
Anything from the public? Come up here, Bill.
I was just curious, if you guys create this district, does that change the zoning? Or is that something that's got to be done down the road?
My understanding is that it does not change the zoning.
So, it's still going to be R1? That's what it's zoned right now, correct?
Yeah, this does not change that. Down the road, could that happen? It's possible, sure. Anybody else from the public? All right, then, close the public hearing. Thank you. We'll go to number six, orders of resolution. A, Resolution 1904, establish a commercial rehabilitation district.
Your Honor, given the information we have tonight, I'd make a motion to approve the resolution.
I'll support the resolution.
All right, the motion is made. Supporters, any questions? All right, call the roll, please.
Laporte?
Yes.
McCartney?
Yes.
Watt?
Yes.
Kinzetter?
Yes.
Koopa?
Yes.
Cedar?
Yes.
Carey, Your Honor.
Thank you. We'll go to B, Resolution 1905, M.D. Contract, Clinton, Mr. Booth.
This resolution is in support of reconstruction work that is currently scheduled for Clinton Avenue from M-29 to just west of Third Street. The total project cost were estimated at $387,400, which would require a match, a 20% match of $77,600 to the city. Money is available in our major street fund to cover the project cost. The project has already been bid. There was bid in February, I should say, and the low bid came in from ML Sharks here at $298,761.36. So, it came in $88,000 under the estimate by the engineers. So, that, the amount that we're under will pay for the engineering.
Motion to approve.
Support. All right, motion made, supporter. If there's any questions?
Is there a timeline on this one?
This one is the end of June. They won't have done before the summer events get going.
What are they doing?
It's a reconstruction.
What's that consistent?
If you'd like, Mr. Clinton, I can...
What's the bid?
Bill, can you come up here so everybody at home can get to hear this question?
It was $277,000?
Correct.
What's he going to do for $277,000?
Actually, $298,000.
Well, what's he going to do for $298,000?
It's a reconstruction. They consider it, and I'll be happy to bring in the bid if you'd like to look through it.
Any other questions? All right, call the roll, please.
McCartney?
Yes.
Watt?
Yes.
Kinzetter?
Yes.
Koopa?
Yes.
Yes.
Laporte?
Yes.
Cedar?
Yes.
Carey, Your Honor.
We'll go to C, 1906. Local government approval for MLCC application, Anchor Point Bistro. Where's this?
I'll take this, Your Honor. In front of you, for your support, is the application for local government approval. I'm very excited to welcome Anchor Point Bistro back to the plaza, and as part of their new venture, it is going to be applying for a liquor license. So, this is part of the application that they need to have to send to the state, and this is just supporting them and recommending their license application.
I'll make a motion to approve.
All right, the motion is made, supporter. Any questions? Call the roll, please.
Watt?
Yes.
Kinzetter?
Yes.
Koopa?
Yes.
Laporte?
Yes.
McCartney?
Yes.
Cedar?
Yes.
Carey, Your Honor.
Thank you. Mark and Kim are here. Do you guys want to come up and say anything? Would you rather stay way back there?
We'd like your back seat, but we do appreciate it very, hopefully.
Thank you, thank you very much.
I want people to see you two.
Sorry.
Thank you, guys. We could not have done this without the community. It's the community's bistro, and thank you, and we will not let you down. So, we'll be hopefully opening up in the next couple of months.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. Courts of Administration, Mr. Booth?
One item, Your Honor. Beige, a physical on behalf of Schmody Oil. They will be back in to perform a final round of seismic testing. Testing will occur on Vine, Brown, and Third Streets. That was something they'd asked for when we approved the lease, so this should be the last, last time we see them before they're actually doing some work. And Annette has some additional information when she gets her update as far as them reaching out to city residents and what they've done and what to look for. So, that's all I have, Your Honor.
Any questions from Mr. Booth and council? Our city attorneys are not here tonight. City departments, recognition of McLaren and Tony Pizzo Memorial Fund for AED donation. Therese?
Thank you, Mayor. On behalf of the City of St. Clair Recreation Department, we would like to acknowledge a donation received from the McLaren Port Huron Hospital and the Tony Pizzo Memorial Fund for the purchase of an AED device, which is a defibrillator that has been placed at the community center. We did an AED training session on January 22nd for all the users of the building. We had historical museum volunteers present, and some of our card groups attended. We acknowledged the donation at that time, and we placed a plaque on the AED cabinet. The device is located at the community center in the multipurpose room. So, at this time, we do have some representatives here from the Tony Pizzo Memorial Fund. I think they'd like to say a few words.
Good evening. I'm John Pringle, Vice President of the Tony Pizzo Memorial Fund. We put on a golf outing every year where we raise money to where we can contribute to things like this. It's a very valuable lifesaving device. Just want to thank the citizens of St. Clair, all of its private business owners who donate prizes and gifts for us that we can use as raffle prizes to help us earn these monies. Thank you.
Thank you. Keep up the good work. Julie, do you have anything, Your Honor?
No.
I do have a little bit more to add to this story.
Okay.
The St. Clair Recreation Department sponsors a pickleball program, and that program's held at the former education center. And unfortunately, we did have a heart-related emergency at our program, and there is no AED device located at the education center at that time. There was no device. So, we were fortunate to have some people trained in CPR that assisted the victim until emergency arrived. But, the Blue Water Area Pickleball Club took it upon themselves to conduct a fundraiser, and they raised all the funds so that they could purchase an AED machine for our program and for their club use. But, that was placed at the education program, our education center building for our program. But, McLaren Hospital and the Tony Pizzo Foundation heard about their efforts, and as a result, they got involved with the city, and we were able to purchase the additional AED machine for the community center. So, it was one of those pay-it-forward efforts. So, I did want to recognize the Blue Water Pickleball Club for their efforts and the donations that we've announced tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll go to the Authority Board, the Commissions. Anybody have anything?
Two quick things, Your Honor, just to add on to what Mr. Booth stated regarding the seismic testing. The oil and gas reservoir lease that the city approved recently, there's also private residents who are receiving these letters, and I just wanted to let everybody know that the two people who are walking throughout town do have a vendor permit for door-to-door solicitation. We do know who they are, so feel free to ask for their permit, ask who they are. When in doubt, always call the police department if anybody comes to your door. And just to reiterate, our ordinance does state you do have to have a permit to do any door-to-door solicitation, lawn service, windows, anything of that sort. So, if you ever want to know, call the police department. They keep a list. I keep a list in the clerks department, and they should have a permit on them or in their vehicle. So, I just wanted to let you know that we do backcheck everybody who comes through town to keep everybody safe.
Thank you. All right, number eight, we have no unfinished business. Number nine, new business, special events permit, St. Clair High School class of 1978, Officer Ennis?
Your Honor, council members, requesting approval for a special event permit for the St. Clair High School to hold their 40th class reunion at the courtyard of the mall on September 14th, 2019, from 2:00 p.m. till midnight. Chief Raker has approved this event, and we have all necessary documents, and they are in compliance with the city ordinance.
Motion to approve.
Support. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed? The special events permit, 2019, recreation summary events?
The special, the second one is a special event permit for the City of St. Clair Recreation Department to hold their annual summary events. That would be held at Palmer Park in the community center from June 8th and through July 19th. June 8th through July 19th. Chief Raker has approved these events, and they are in compliance with the city ordinance.
Motion to approve.
Support. Questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job. C, Imagination Station Second Generation Rebuild Request for Proposal Recommendation.
Therese? Thank you. We have a community project, and I think we've brought it before City Council previously, for the Imagination Playground. This is a rebuild project of the Greg Park Wood Playground structure. An assessment of the playground was conducted back in 2017, and they recommended a rebuild for safety compliance, ADA accessibility, and also to replace equipment and materials. So, we have been working on establishing a volunteer committee to work on this project, and we've had a couple of informational meetings, and we had volunteers that wanted to be on the selection committee. We do have to pick a design group that will help us with this community build, and we have some representatives here today to go over the bid process and their recommendation to City Council for the design group to work with our project.
Like you interviewed yourself.
Mr. Mayor, council member, my name is Mike Ginup. I'm one of the co-chairs of the Imagination Station Rebuild. Jason Stoltz is also co-member. So, just want to run, you know, the council through, not to take up too much of your time, but, so, really quick overview. So, Leathers and Associates built the playground roughly 20-some years ago, and it's just in need of some love. So, the assessment was done by the company that came in, and there's a lot of things that need to be updated, changed, to keep it safe for the kids and those kind of things. And, like I said, Leathers and Associates built it then. We went through the bidding process, and we once again reached out to Leathers. You know, they were familiar with the process, and then we also bid out with a company called Play by Design out of Pennsylvania. It just so happened that many of the original members that built the original Imagination Station have left Leathers and are now with Play by Design. So, they're familiar with the process and the project. So, overall, the important things here, and it's kind of small print there, so I apologize, but Play by Design was a cheaper option after looking at everything. But, in all honesty, we kind of got feeling they were the company we wanted to go with prior to even receiving the bid. We talked to them at length. They have great ideas. They seem very open to working with what the community wanted, rather than just saying, hey, these are the things that can be done. So, our, you know, recommendation is to, and ask for approval, to go and move forward with Play by Design. And we do have a bit of a timeline here, I think. Let me go to that. Sorry about that. So, this is the overall timeline. So, the sooner we can make the decision, get your approval, and move forward, the clock starts. Right now, we're shooting for sometime in the fall, early fall, to begin the redesign, or I'm sorry, should say the rebuild. And, you know, we plan, we're going for another five to six-day total build package, just like they did, you know, 20 years ago. And the more volunteers we have, the faster we can make it. And so, that is, you know, our recommendation. Again, like I said, Play by Design, and we look for your approval on that.
So, are you looking to do the build like the last couple of weeks of October?
Right now, I think it's anywhere between September, October. Yes, Mayor.
They're going to give us guidance kind of on that once we make a decision. So, they'll kind of tell us if that kind of timeline fits with what we can do.
And the timeline you see in front of you came from them. You know, this is when they were available, they laid everything out. We'll do the exact same thing that they did before. There'll be a design day in all the schools, the elementary schools, so we can get all the kids input and do those kind of things, just like they did before. And so, we're really excited about it. You know, like I said, we are looking for, obviously, more volunteers. We have a kind of a steering committee that's been formed, but now we're looking to, as we, once we finalize this, get the word out there and look for more volunteers that might want to lead some other areas for us. And so, we're excited about it.
Any questions from Jason or Mike?
I have some additional, just some project funding information. So, just in summary, the bid received from Play by Design was for $240,000, and the one from Leathers and Associate was $293,400. This is a community build and a community-funded project. There will be a community-wide funding campaign following a design day that is part of the timeline there, and I think we're trying to get the design day in April. So, we hope you'll see some of our efforts to get the community involved. Again, we need volunteers, and we need donations for the project. So, this is not a general fund project. The only city funding that we've talked about is possibly some in-kind services from our DPW, and also the possibility that we may use some of our St. Clair County Parks and Recreation Village Funds for the projects. We're not requesting that at this time. That would go before the Recreation Commission, and they would come back to you, and that would need council approval. We do have some committed funds for the project already in advance. The Community Foundation has committed some funds, and we also have a pending donation request with the Community Foundation. The St. Clair Rotary Club has committed $30,000 towards the project, and that's a multi-year pledge. But, last year, as part of the big give, they did already donate $20,588.96 towards the project. And two of the elementary schools have already conducted fundraisers for the project. Eddie Elementary School, their second grade did a penny wars, and they donated $1,740.66. And Gearing School, just a couple of weeks ago, also, they did a penny war fundraiser, and they donated $4,106.2. And both these parents are gearing parents there.
Gators.
So, like I said, we do have committed funds. We've received funds towards the project, and we do have some pending donations. And really, that design day will be our kickoff day where we'll pursue grants, ask for individual, business, other foundation grants and funding, just like the original project.
The only thing you're looking for tonight is our approval to take on Play by Design?
Correct.
Yes.
I'm going to make the motion to approve the community's request for Play by Design for the Imagination Station.
Support.
Motion is made, supporter. Any questions? Call the roll, please.
Kinzetter?
Yes.
Koopa?
Yes.
Laporte?
Yes.
McCartney?
Yes.
Watt?
Yes.
Cedar?
Yes.
Carey, Your Honor.
Thank you. Jason, Mike, Therese, thank you, you guys. Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go to the Boards and Commissions. I have one appointment to the Library Board, Kathy Rude of 1935 North River Lloyd for a three-year term expiring December 3rd for 2021.
Motion to approve.
Support. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed? Number 10 is claims and accounts for February 21 and 28, 2019.
Hearing no questions, Your Honor. Make a motion to approve.
Support. Motion is made, supporter. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed? Go to number 11. Public questions, public comments. Anybody have anything? Would we get a little cause out here?
We had planned to come here. I'm Gail Spinazza. I'm a representative of the Blue Water Pickleball. And what I have is a letter here from our group that was supposed to go to Jeff earlier, and I'd like to bring it up here just so you guys know our intentions. So, I'm just going to read that for you. Is that okay? Okay. Good evening. I'm here representing the more than 100 people who have played pickleball in the main gym at the old middle school. This is the only location in St. Clair County that has three courts. It is centrally located in the county, and in addition to players from St. Clair, we have people from Harson's Island, Algonack, Marine City, Marysville, Port Huron, Fort Grashit, Canada, and McComb. We have been playing there Monday through Friday from 9:00 to 11:00 p.m. for the, or a.m. for the last five years. We were very optimistic about continuing play there when we read in the newspaper that you said, or Mr. Kowalski said, that the space would continue, would continue as is, particularly those used with the city of St. Clair, which would be our pickleball group. The same article also stated that renovations likely wouldn't come until closer to the end of the year. We are here tonight to ask if there is any possibility that we can continue to play in that gym for an extended period of time. This would give us an opportunity to try to locate another facility that would support our numbers. The auxiliary gym does not meet our needs, given the number of players. That gym could possibly support two courts. However, there are concerns about the floor in the gym. The majority of the players are senior citizens and greatly appreciate and enjoy this opportunity for exercise. In addition to the physical health needs that this activity addresses, it is also great for mental and emotional health. This group of people have become very good friends and would like the opportunity to continue to play together. We thank you for your consideration in this request. Just want to know if anything you can do to help us to continue to do that.
We will. Thank you very much.
Okay. And then, can I talk now as a, just not the representative?
Sure.
I know pickleball is going to be a big thing, and what I believe we need, my own personal opinion, is a countywide community center where we could work together with everybody for all ages and have pickleball courts and basketball courts and things that everybody can use. I know Tim Lolito has his thing that he wants to do to teach the kids and stuff, and if this could all be in one facility for all ages, we could keep everybody off the streets and having fun and doing things. But, it's a countywide thing. I don't know what to do, but maybe you guys could think about it, maybe tell me. I would gladly get involved to help with it. Any way we could bring everybody together. the streets and having fun and doing things, but it's a county-wide thing. I don't know what to do, but maybe you guys could think about it, maybe tell me. I would gladly get involved to help with it, any way we could bring everybody together. You know, the Council on Aging has a great system and they do a lot of good things. You know, and I know the Rec Department does and other places, but if we could get together instead of all over, I think we could really have something good for the whole St. Clair County. So just a thought. Thank you and if you know anything, I'd love to hear.
Thank you, Gail. Any other public comment tonight? Come up to this microphone and give us your name and address, please.
My name is Fred Kilkline, 631 North Third Street. Across the street from my house is 640, which is now storing building materials, I believe, for the inn. Can you tell me, has the property been purchased?
Danny?
Did I get roped into this?
You walked in the door. That, they closed on that a couple of months ago?
Yes. And all that material is getting moved up off-site or maybe into the parking lot of the school temporarily and then out. So it's just a temporary holding site, but it is owned by the developer.
Thank you.
Can you tell me what the use is going to be of the property after the?
It would be pure speculation. I don't know.
It's not, what are you saying?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know. That's, I would be speculating.
I have been told that it's residential one. Is that, will that hold or have you changed it?
It's R2. Dee says it's R2. I have to trust Dee.
Commercial rehabilitation district. Do you have a subject property or is this general?
The address of the old middle school, is it 311?
301.
301. 301. 301, Sixth Street?
No, I'm speaking of, earlier in a meeting, you mentioned this rehabilitation.
Yeah, that's 4301 Sixth Street.
Pardon?
That's 4301 Sixth Street.
301.
301, yeah, that's, that rehabilitation district is 4301 Sixth Street. The old middle school.
Should the neighbors have gotten a notice on that?
It did.
Like when you change zoning, neighbors get a notice?
We didn't change zoning on this, though.
There was a notice of the public hearing.
Oh, that's a violation?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Okay, that's it.
Thanks, Fred. Anybody else?